We'll call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation following.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Roll call, please.
Alan here. Green here. Ms. Stravich.
Here.
Rindell.
Here.
Ricks.
Here.
Schultz.
Warren.
Here. Motion to excuse Counselor Schultz from tonight's meeting for giving proper notice.
I'll make a motion.
Support.
Motion made and supported. Any discussion? If you let us know a few weeks ago, you wouldn't be able to make tonight's meeting. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported to approve the minutes of September 7th. Is there any discussion or comments? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to adoption of the agenda. Mr. City Manager, you have a change.
I do have a change, and as it relates to homecoming, I would ask that we add it as item 3A right after the homecoming parade. That'd be the homecoming fireworks demonstration.
Thank you. Does Counsel have any changes?
No.
A motion to accept the amended agenda would be in order?
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Against? Motion does pass. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. There's no discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Against? Motion does pass. Oh, yeah, I missed audience comments there. I slid right through. We just had one gentleman in the audience say, "Are you speaking to anything that's on the agenda right now?"
No.
Okay. Is there any comments that you'd like to make to the City Council? If so, just step to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
In regards to the consent agenda?
No, to the audience comments, I slid by it.
Oh, okay.
Okay, alrighty. Alright, did we, I'm sorry, did we pass the motion on the consent?
Yeah, we did.
Okay, now we move on. There is no public hearing. Move on to items for consideration. First, we have eight, nine on the amended motion. The first one being consideration request to keep chickens at 70171 Main Street by Bernadette Biniek. Mr. City Manager?
The City Council is scheduled to consider a petition from Bernadette Biniek to keep up to 15 ugly chickens, hens, on property located at 70171 Main Street. The properties to the south and east are developed with single-family residences. The property to the north is vacant, and the property to the west is being planned for single-family residential condos. On Friday, September 3rd, notices were mailed to the surrounding properties informing them of their request and allowing for their comments. In response to the letter, so far we have not received any correspondence, either email or letters. Based on that, our recommendation is for approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion before discussion?
I'll make the motion to approve the petition from Bernadette Biniek for the keep up to 15 hen-chickens on her property, subject to the following conditions, being, number one, chickens are allowed, chickens allowed will be female chicken hens, no roosters. Number two, the approval shall be subject to a one-year review if the complaints are received from neighbors regarding the chickens. Number three, the application shall be limited to the existing four-by-eight coop as seen in the photos.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion on this?
I have two questions. One is the year review, who conducts, is that city staff that conducts that one-year review to check the condition of the coop, the yard?
Yep, and have we received any complaints since then?
Okay.
I believe in some correspondence with Counsel. Unless we see an issue or receive complaints, we don't necessarily always put it back on your agenda, but we will if there's any complaints or if we see any issues with the property.
Another one is, it's, so it's undeveloped property around it, correct? But it's zoned for multi, or condos? I'm just trying to understand what was behind. If something should be built there, would they ever have a say whether they wanted chickens or not?
That's probably where the complaint would come in.
But that would be after the year?
After the fact, yes, correct.
That would be, just, they would have no recourse?
Well, we would if it was a nuisance.
Right.
It falls under a nuisance ordinance.
Okay.
And then we could go, you know.
So regardless of the year, we always can go back with a nuisance?
Yes.
Okay, that's reassuring. Last, 15s is a lot of chickens.
Yeah. I see we approved 13.
Yes, which is, yes.
Yeah. But I think in the narrative here, they were talking about it, they also use the chickens for eating also. So, that's not terrible. Yeah, I think currently they have 10. Yes. And I think that number kind of, as the mayor mentioned, goes up and down. Yes. As they mature, I mean, it's just, but, I mean, that's.
Yeah. And where they're at, they're really basically around nobody.
Right.
You know.
Yeah. The planner said it's the least detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood.
Right.
And I'm assuming by the pictures, it looks like there is a line, a forested line at the back of the property that would separate the new proposed condominium build-out behind there. Anything else?
Any audience comments on this item? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item two is consideration of special event requests from Richmond High School. Ban boosters for the banner request for the annual pumpkin craft extravaganza. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider a request from the Richmond ban boosters to have a banner across Main Street, M-19, and temporary signage that would advertise and direct people to their eighth annual pumpkin craft and vendor sale. On the banner, it's pumpkin extravaganza due to M dot wording restrictions, but it's the same banner they've used, I believe. This will be the third year, third or fourth year.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the special event application from Richmond ban boosters for an across-the-road banner from September 21st through October 2nd in conjunction with their annual pumpkin craft and vendor sale on October 2nd and 3rd.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion on this item? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We have a second motion.
I make a motion to approve the special event application from the Richmond ban boosters for temporary signage in conjunction with their annual pumpkin craft and vendor sale, October 2nd and 3rd. The signs placed at the city limits, the city limits signs will be allowed beginning Friday, September 7th.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion on this?
Never mind off on my motions here.
Okay.
Not this one.
Sorry.
Any comments, Counsel? Any comments, sir? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Good luck to them. Item 3A on the amended agenda is the special event request for fireworks during the homecoming. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Council is scheduled to consider a special event request from Pyro Joe's Troutman Five LLC to do a fireworks display after the homecoming football game on Friday, October 1st. The show will start, it's actually earlier than a half hour, I had written that before I talked to Mike. They give a few minutes for people to leave the stands if they want to, then they turn the lights off and have the fireworks display. It's similar to displays they've done for the school in the past. And so, but underneath our new fireworks ordinance, any fireworks display like this needs to come before Counsel, where before, since it was on school ground, it did not. So he's following up on the current special event form.
Excellent. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the Pyro Joe's request to conduct a firework display at Richmond High School after the homecoming game on Friday, October 1st, 2021.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion on this?
I just would like to thank Pyro Joe's for doing that, for the community. He always blesses us in one way or another by giving us a display, so.
Really adds to the event, definitely. Any other comments, Counsel? Sir? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number 3B is consideration of special event request, Richmond High School Homecoming Parade. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider a request we received from the Richmond High School for permission to conduct the annual homecoming parade. This year, the parade is scheduled for Friday, October 1st, 2021, beginning at 5:00 PM.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the request from the Richmond High School to conduct the annual homecoming parade and direct the city clerk to apply to M dot for permission to close M-19 from 5:00 to 6:00 PM on Friday, October 1st, 2021, to conduct the annual homecoming parade.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion on this? Sir? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Good luck to the Blue Devils. Item number four is consideration of special event request, Richmond Moose Lodge, Michigan Dressers Motorcycle Tow Run, toy run, not tow, toy run. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled, excuse me, to consider a special event request from the Richmond Moose Lodge and Richmond, or the Michigan Dressers Motorcycle Club to conduct the 34th Annual Toy Run for Kids on Grand Trunk Avenue between Main and Howard on Sunday, October 3rd. The ride will begin on Grand Trunk, as it always has, and this is the third year that Michigan Dressers have worked with Richmond Moose Lodge to begin the event in Richmond. Organizers are asking permission to close Grand Trunk Avenue from Main to just before Howard Street, back by where the apartments are. They would close the street from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and everything else is pretty much the same as they did last year.
Very good. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the special event request from the Richmond Moose Lodge and the Michigan Dressers Motorcycle Club to conduct the 34th Annual Toy Run for Kids, including the closure of Grand Trunk, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM on Sunday, 3rd of October. Use Grand Trunk from Moose Lodge to Shepherd's for reception following.
Support. Motion's been made and supported. Is there any discussion on this?
Like they asked me, City Manager can reach out to them and see if they're going to need the fire department utilize them for traffic again like they had in the past.
Sure.
Normally, there's some rep here for that, we can clear it up. That way, we can convey that to the chief.
Yeah, because I think both the PD and RVFD.
Yeah, we take, help them with traffic.
Both help with traffic, right?
Much, much safer that way.
Yeah, okay.
Any other discussion? Sir? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We have a second motion needed for a banner.
I make a motion to approve the banner request for a small banner promoting the Richmond Moose Lodge and Michigan Dressers Motorcycle Club's 34th Annual Toy Run for Kids to be placed in the grass area near Grand Trunk and M-19, beginning on Sunday, October 3rd, 2021.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Okay, they just want to put that out the day of the run? That doesn't look right.
I know, some years they've put it out like a week before.
Yeah.
Or two, two weeks before. And then, I think, last year they did it just one day, but I think in the past, some of the years it was multiple, like, a couple of weeks.
Yeah. Would you mind, Emily, would you mind dating that back two weeks so they can have some time to advertise?
Yep, that's fine.
We have a calendar right here.
It would be this week.
It would be this week.
Want to say the 20th, 25th or 26th?
Do you want to go the 25th? Okay, if you wouldn't mind.
Nope.
Okay, so that would be September 25th of 2021, they would be allowed to put their banner out on the amended. Okay, anything else?
Just with that change of motion, will we notify them that they're allowed to do that? Just?
We will, yeah. Apparently, the clerk had talked to them and they had requested just the one day.
Okay.
But sometimes, different people working within the same organization sometimes. So, we'll let them know they do have some leeway, but.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, anything else, Counsel? Sir? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. I hope they have good weather. I sold my Harley, I won't be able to go this year.
But you can go to the lodge.
Well, yeah, I can just do that. Item number five, consideration of the introduction, first reading of ordinance number 156-29, changes to accessory structure standards. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider the introduction and first reading of ordinance 156-29, which amends section 7.02(c) of the zoning ordinance and revises the maximum accessory structure size, height, and setback requirements. Last year, the planning commission, on meetings where they didn't have a lot on the agenda, began going through the zoning ordinance to see if there were sections that needed to be updated, and based on some BZA requests, this was one of them that they decided to tackle first. And essentially, there's three changes. The total allowable area has been changed to an area of 7.5% of the total lot area or the square footage of the existing buildings, whichever is greater. But there is, in doing that change, we also wanted to protect some of the very large lots from having huge outbuildings, so there is a caveat that I believe anything over 3,000 square feet needs planning commission approval. So, it does allow people with larger lots in town to have a larger outbuildings. Essentially, they tackled this based on, a lot of people have a lot more, I don't want to call them toys, but RVs, jet skis, things that we, in our ordinance, require them to put inside, so, and they can only store one outside. So, the thought was to, we were getting variance requests to have a little bit bigger building. So, hence the change. In making the change to a bigger building, we also wanted to make sure that the height was right so that we amend it, and so they had reasonable pitch on the roof, so we did amend that and increase the height of the building. And then, but due to the height of the building being increased, felt that the setback should also be increased, so the setback has to be a little bit greater, can't be right up against the property line. So those are the three main changes. Lots of discussion, lots of good discussion at the planning commission level, going back and forth, kind of trying to get our numbers right so that it gets people additional size on their outbuildings, but yet doesn't go overboard, and hence the kind of catch-all there of anything over a certain size has to come to planning commission. And so, a lot of work going into this, and planning commission is recommending approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Make the motion to introduce and give first reading of ordinance 156-29, which amends section 7.02(c) to detach accessory structure standard for single or two-family residential uses to revise the maximum accessory structure, size, height, and setback regulations.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion? Very, very good discussions on this. We went back and forth at planning commission, a number of meetings, and kind of sat on it for a little while, and then we asked for, well, what's that going to look like? You know, and, it's a concern, it's a concern of the planning commission, we can always change it. If all of a sudden we start getting huge accessory structures next to little tiny houses, it's not going to look right. That was the main, major concern of ours. We didn't see any way that we could address that without what we have done here right now. We don't know any other way to do that. But in the spirit of us trying to get, you know, RVs and boats and whatnot, you know, put away inside, previous to this, you could not get anything over basically eight-foot high into your garage. This is going to allow something larger to be able to go in. We didn't go as large as some of the guys were talking about, because we didn't think that was going to look right in our, within the community. But on the other hand, you do have some people that have acreage inside the city limits with their home, and it's not fair to not allow them to utilize that property the way that the ordinance read. So that's where it has to come back, back to the planning commission for approval to do something bigger back. You know, when I say back there, most of it's on, you know, back parcels. So, I highly recommend this. We did, we did go through this, and we had Troy looking up all kinds of stuff to see what could happen here if we allow this, and we want to give it a try.
Mr. Mayor?
Questions?
Yeah, I do have a question. So, previously, did the ordinance go by a percentage of the house that you could have?
Could exceed the footprint? The footprint of the house.
It couldn't exceed the footprint of the house. Okay, so this now goes on land, not that. Okay, which, great idea. Does this include the total number of buildings, or is it just one, like?
You could have multiple buildings, they just can't add up to X percent.
That's what I mean, so.
Which is currently how we do it too, even though it's the, the core ordinance relates to the total footprint of the house, you can take that footprint and sprint it up, split it up into multiple buildings.
Okay.
So that did not change.
Okay.
We'll see, we'll see how it goes.
We'll see how it goes.
This is one of those that we really, 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 really thought out the best we could, and we just came down to, hey, if this doesn't look right, we'll change it.
We can change it.
You know? Those that are under it will be grandfathered and we'll go from there, but I don't think anybody wants to build an ugly, you know, place, for the most part.
It always looks good in the beginning, it's later on that gets the concern.
Yes, yes.
Okay, any other discussion on this, Counsel?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to, being a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals, this also had a lot of discussion, and kind of helped spearhead the discussion at the planning commission.
It did.
And this was just a simple request to add eight feet onto a garage, and by the fact that this resident had a shed in the other corner of the property, you couldn't do that unless he tore down the shed, and it didn't seem to make sense. So, I think this, this is perfectly in line. So we did approve that variance, so now he's actually in code.
Yes.
Because of that. So I do appreciate all the work the planning commission did on it, and this is, this is a good thing. Thank you.
Anything else? Sir?
So it's the footprint of the house?
Excuse me, you have to use the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, state your name, please, for the clerk.
Richard Michael. So it's footprint of the house or 7.5% of the total land?
Yes.
Yes, whichever is greater.
Okay. That was my only question. Thanks.
Okay, back to the table. There's nothing else? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number six, consideration of memorial benches. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider approving memorial benches, donations. In the 1920 budget, the recreation director budgeted to replace the remaining benches in the park that were wood and starting to fall apart, and at the same time, she also created a flyer to advertise that we do take bench memorials, and which she was able to get four total benches paid for through the memorials. There's just a little miscommunication, and we didn't bring those as we normally do to Counsel, so we're doing a little catch-up tonight, and asking you to approve the four benches. First bench was paid for through a donation of the family of Jim Shepherd, a local business owner. Second bench is paid for by a donation from J.J. Naps for a longtime customer, Denise Miller. And the third and fourth benches were paid through a donation from the Magna Corporation in memory of employee Patricia Nye, who was a longtime Richmond resident. All applicants did fill out the proper memorial gift paperwork when they submitted.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the memorial bench donation agreements in memory of Jim Shepherd, Denise Miller, and Patricia Nye.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Is there any discussion? Appreciate the donations.
Yes.
To enhance the park, much-needed benches. Any other discussion? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number seven is consideration of scheduling 2022 council meeting schedule. Mr. City Manager?
In order to comply with the requirements of the Open Meetings Act, Council must establish a schedule of council meetings for the upcoming year. If Council wishes to continue holding the meetings on the first and third Mondays of the month, beginning at 7:00 PM, the following schedule is presented for adoption. There's two changes. The first, due to the Fourth of July holiday, the first meeting in July will be held on the first Tuesday of the month, and due to Labor Day, the first meeting for September will be held the first Tuesday of September.
Again, is there a motion before discussion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the 2022 city council meeting schedule as presented.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion? Well, I just happen to have, July 5th, the day after the 4th, I'm not going to be here. You can leave it on the 5th, but I'm telling you, I will not be here. Hopefully, still be celebrating at my cottage in Lexington that day. So, if you would like to change it to the 6th, I will be back on the 6th. Otherwise, you can leave it as motioned. Hearing nothing?
I have no issue with changing it to the 6th.
6th would be better, too. Yep.
I meant my motion.
Pretty quick there, but not quick enough.
Do you want the change, or do you not want the change?
Real nice, real nice. Okay, so.
6th will be fine. I'm in the motion. With the change.
With the change. Let's see, how about good old days? I want the one before it goes.
Well, that's what, that's the one I'm surprised you don't want to change.
No, that was the easiest on the Tuesday, because we have meetings following.
Yeah, we've always had it, and that's our annual tent inspection also, so, of the councils, so hate to break with tradition.
Okay.
We usually try to keep it as light as possible, you know.
That Wednesday doesn't work for the Wednesday to change.
No, no, it would be even worse.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so, Rob has added the July 6th date to his.
Somebody's got to remind me. I'm totally going to show up on Tuesday.
Change there. Any other discussion on this? Oh, sir? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Thank you, Counsel. Let's see, item number eight is in consideration of scheduling a quarterly roundtable meeting date. Mr. City Manager?
Council is being asked to schedule its next quarterly roundtable. The next one would normally be in October.[1752.52] The next one would normally be in October. October 4th and 18th are the two meetings, regular meetings in October.
Okay, council, would you like to suspend our rules and look for a date? Or is somebody ready to make a motion? Suspend the rules?
Yeah.
Okay. We have consensus. Okay, so we either have the 4th or the 18th as the regular city council meeting. Are we?
18th.
Yeah, I was going to say the 18th. Are we?
I think that'd be better.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely.
18th works good for me.
I don't see anything major.
No, I, there's a few things we're going to talk about, but that we have on, but nothing that, you know, is pressing. I think the 18th would work well. My only thought, and certainly you can do a closed session that night, too.
That's what I was wondering.
But if possible, could, if we can get my evaluation on the 4th, that'd be great. I know they're, they're coming in, but if not, it can go on the 18th, we can always, you know? But depending on who else is there, if we go into closed session and they're waiting for us to come out.
Right. And also, we could be having a closed session on purchase of property that same night.
On the 4th, yeah.
On the 8th. Oh, it would be the 4th, wouldn't it?
Yes.
That would be the 4th. Right.
So if possible, I mean, I don't want to push the committee, but.
What are we thinking?
What do you want?
Like the 18th.
18th is good.
What time, 6 o'clock?
I'm good either way.
18th, what's?
5:30?
5:30?
What's the earliest?
5:30?
5:30?
5:30.
5:30 is good for me.
Okay. Let's have a motion.
I make a motion to schedule the specially quarter, oh my goodness, the special quarterly roundtable meeting of the city council on October 18th at 5:30 at City Hall.
Support.
Most of them made and supported. Any other discussion on this item? Person is gone. Any other comments, council, on this item? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Okay, so that's a 5:30 on the 18th. Okay. Moving on, miscellaneous matters from the city manager?
We were down looking at some concrete work today at 31 and Grashit. The contractor will be redoing some of that work to bring it to Jim's specifications. There was also discussions that it appears in October, they'll be beginning the signal work at 32 in Main.
Very good. Okay, moving on. Rob?
Nothing.
John?
Nothing.
Emily?
Well, I have to say how wonderful Good Old Days was. And especially the parade. Everyone, all over town, it's been just going on and on about how wonderful it was and it was, it was great. I was a spectator for the first time in several years, so perfect weather and it was, it was great. So thank you to everyone for all their hard work.
Absolutely.
Well, and I concur with her and, and like I said, most, like she said, most, all my neighbors agree, had the most fun. They really enjoyed it this time and so it was a success.
Michael?
Yes, just as was mentioned, city manager evaluation, please get those in if you haven't already. We are scheduled to meet the committee on the 30th, but not for, particularly for that, but for the other topic, which, which we'll be discussing with the city manager. Also, this week, both myself and Councilor Green are heading over to Grand Rapids to represent the city for the MML convention, municipal league. So we'll go there and bring back some, hopefully, some useful information.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank yous to everybody on behalf of the Good Old Days Festival. It was an interesting year for the festival committee. I mean, we had about 90 days to put it all together when the governor told us the end of May that more than likely, it was going to be open 100%. That's when we, and I was talking with Armada again today, and they said the same thing. It's when they decided also to go and, and, and hold our festivals. That's a year of planning all done within 90 days, so hats off to everybody. And it takes a lot of people to do that. And it was a, I thought it was a great weekend. The weather stayed with us until 7 o'clock on Sunday night, when the skies opened up, which was okay. We had, we had a record year in most everything that we did. Three days of demolition, derby, the beverage tent, the carnival was a record breaker by far. So we're hoping to reinvest some of that money in some much-needed work over there. And we'll see what, what happens for, hopefully, things are better than what they were. We have a longer period of time to, to plan and bring in some new things. And we're just very happy with all the cooperation we got, again, from the city, the businesses, and, and everybody in our community. And can't say how thankful we are for the community that we have. A lot of, a lot of communities do not have the cooperation like the city of Richmond has given to this festival. And it's probably one of the reasons the festival continues to grow, is because of the support that comes from the city. So thank you very much, John, and your administration for all the, the help and the DPW. But a lot of last-minute things this year, because it had been two years since we were able to handle, and we found some, some areas that weren't going to work real well for a lot of people. Boy, we had a lot of people, so. But thank you to everybody that spent an hour helping or spent the whole year working on the festival. We appreciate everybody. So we'll go to the calendar. We're already talking about October here. Today being the 20th of September, we have a TIFA meeting at 7:00 here at City Hall on the 22nd. Do we have an EDC meeting?
Yes, on the 25th.
We have an EDC meeting at 7:00 here at City Hall on the 23rd. The Friends of the Library will be having their annual puzzle sale on the 25th. That's Saturday from 10 till 2 at the library. Two weeks from tonight is the next regular scheduled city council meeting. And don't forget the homecoming parade on October 1st at 5:00. I don't believe we have anything else at this point in time for the calendar?
I think there was a couple flyers, maybe. Put it at your desk, Nicole, I think, talking about the cemetery walk, maybe.
Oh, yes. Yes, the Historic Cemetery Walk is, I believe, this weekend, yeah, September 25th, from 1:00 to 3:00, that's Saturday, held in the city's cemetery at the north, far north end of the town. You, I believe you, there are tickets to, yeah, tickets for $15. And you can purchase, purchase those tickets by contacting Mary Ellen Shepherd Logan at That's the City of Richmond Cemetery Walk. Should be very interesting. What do we have here? Also, on September 25th, Saturday, we have Macomb County's Meet Me on the Trail Day. And Wildflower Yoga in Pilates will be doing a 45-minute gentle yoga and meditation practice at the McCommore Church Trailhead. And that is all on September 25th, starting at 9:00 a.m. We also have the 2021 Scarecrow Decorating Contest, put on by the City of Richmond Recreation Department. There's a $10 entry fee. I imagine you can probably contact our Parks and Rec at 727-3064 for an entry. And they will give you a poll to decorate with your scarecrow. And I think usually, they have judging and whatnot. So again, contact our Parks and Recreation Department for more information at 727-3064. And I think that covers it. I don't think there's any more hidden under there. That's it. Is there anything else that we need to add to the calendar? Schools back in, sounds like people are working through all the construction and whatnot the best they can. Sounds like we are having some issues with driving over there, but once everything's all done, hopefully, everything will get much better at the schools. Otherwise, happy fall to everybody. There is no closed session. Is there any other business for the city council this evening? If not, motion to adjourn would be in order.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Most of them made and supported. There is no discussion on the motion, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Thanks for being with us.